That's what we did, it was a couple of years ago, I think it was probably the one you were talking about.
The carport?
Yeah, she was an A, but she applied to be a B so she could add the carport.
So in the case of this, of this, uh, this.
They put in three holes on Cedar Valley.
Yeah.
And how are you? Mr. Recorder, what's your name?
My name's Gabby.
Gabby, this is our daughter Gabby.
Gabby just says that here, says that we have to record her.
No pressure.
Or is that what you've used?
Okay.
So they.
Yeah, she does. Patty, you look all springy. You look all springy.
Like the winter jacket.
I'm so tired of black.
Yeah, I was running around in a T-shirt today, I worked.
I'm not doing it, not putting my jacket on.
One more time. For the spring.
My coworkers have done nine and ten days without power up near north of Petoskey and all that. I never lost power, so I try not to have the conversation.
I know, me either.
Who's the generator going around us, do you know?
Me, Cooper, and then up the hill, Cooper and, um, Levanway.
So does it come from the south then on cooling?
North.
It comes from the north?
Past me, Cooper, down on the right, and I think that noise, you probably even hear it better than I do.
Yeah, it goes uphill, yeah.
I think supposedly they put in phase three electric on our corner because the best farm, the best farm used so much power that it would trip, it would blow it all the time, so that's why.
Yeah.
Because what they put in there for the farm.
They have a milk, milking farm there.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, we never.
More reliable or, I mean.
We were super lucky, I mean, but you go down the Levanway Road and obviously it's running from east heading west.
They just got it yesterday.
Did you vacate?
Yeah, we just got power yesterday.
Went up to Polly's at Island View.
Eleven days?
Yeah, one of her projects didn't have power until yesterday.
Probably six days, she got hers back.
Right, the one on Carters Road.
And she did have one day, like, I think Tuesday where she had power, and then it went off again Wednesday, so.
Well, thank you.
Did Em have power?
No.
Well, okay.
But she and AJ were gone all week.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was okay for them.
Okay, well, you can always.
Yeah, and we'll see if that, I'm sure it was, it was a shared project.
Yeah, I had a Thursday night when she had her couple days.
Yeah, just for talking. I wasn't sure if that made it worse.
Yep.
Well, good for them for getting away, that's probably kind of the first sort of.
No.
No, I thought, for the two of them though, without kids?
Yeah, they go, he gets a companion ticket for his American Express, so.
No, that's eleven.
Kind of.
There's two of them.
Somewhere, it's hard to use it, there's a restriction by Delta, but.
And that is why subscribers are here, so.
I know they went last year, I think the year, yeah, last year she went to Pittsburgh maybe and Delaware the year before that.
Correct, yeah, or seventy-two, seventy-two or seventy-six.
So.
Yeah, okay.
It's so important, a little sanity.
Yeah, passing it sanity after the grandma's.
Right.
Uh, it's a little easier every year now that there's no baby, that's, you know, easier, it'll be easier next year too.
Yeah, right.
And they help take care of each other too, right?
Uh, yeah, yeah, they do, they're good kids.
Whoa, that's pretty handy. What does that mean? I think maybe it's an. Hit us over. Right. Yeah. So move on, because I have somebody that's. And that, yeah, I just wanted to. Yeah. Right, no, you're right. I think it's the soup. There it is. Someone.
I know, they took the clock all. Is it up?
Five fifty-nine.
People getting close.
Five fifty-eight.
Yeah, so it's a.
Hi, Richard.
Hi, Gabby.
I didn't hear from anybody, so I was like, okay, we're having a meeting.
Good deal. So one egg. So you need that. So you need a special. An egg, yeah. So you need to do this. Yep, and it has to have a public hearing and the whole process. Right. Yep.
Okay, six o'clock, this meeting is called to order, uh, Anita's out, so I am stepping in here, uh, to chair tonight, but welcome to guests and visitors. We have Gabby as our recording, as recording us, we have Cindy Bushman, our recording secretary, Curtis Bushman, our zoning administrator, Ken Lane is our planning consultant from Beckett and Rader, and K, your longest serving, Frank Hersha, um, I'd love to switch this with you, uh, Richard Frisky and then Tyler Strange, so, um, we have, have everyone get a chance to look at the minutes from April, from March eleventh meeting, and are there any edits or revisions?
Edits.
Usually they come to us a couple of weeks ahead, so you, I'm sure you would appreciate, uh, knowing if we have edits ahead of time, but if you,
Mm-hmm.
if there are, no, I would, um, entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented for our March eleventh, twenty twenty-five meeting.
I'll make a motion. Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Bye.
Motion carried, um, Cindy, did you, have you received any correspondence?
I, um, not that I know of, there's nothing here, like I said, our power came on late yesterday and I haven't looked at my computer, but I, I'm not aware of any right now.
Okay. Okay, four announcements, there are a few, and I just got the, I got, I want these for reflected in our minutes, they're off our, um, Banks Township website. We have the May tenth, you've probably all got this, the May tenth cleanup from nine to eleven, um, and that's at the, uh, the share, the old Drudge Brothers quarry there, Essex Road, and then, um, the other announcement would be the Clerk's Office voter registration for the May sixth, eleventh is the next Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. Uh, next three Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays that you can register to vote for upcoming elections, it's Charlevoix and Central Lake that have bond proposals on their ballot. Um, on their, on the banks township.net also has the fact that there's a, a link for those who may be impacted by the storm, uh, there's a link you can go to for the, uh, there was a, a state of emergency declared for our area, and you can go there for forms or, um, gas stations, oxygen availability and so forth. And then the other thing that may be a little bit more time sensitive is that there is a meeting next Monday, the Township Board will be having a meeting, and they will be, um, interviewing or speaking with two options for potential attorneys, new attorneys for our Banks Township, and if you have any questions or if the public has any questions, they should forward theirs tomorrow, by tomorrow, to Alex Bushman, our Township supervisor.
What, what date is that, Patty?
Um, he asked for the questions to be forwarded to him by April ninth, tomorrow, uh, and this came out, and we, I think, I hope everybody got that email, if you had questions, no? If you do have questions, reach out to him that you would like asked of, of a potential attorney, and also to the public too. Okay, and that's all I have, oh, no, there is one other announcement I wanted to note, and probably Ken, you are most instrumental in this. Um, with our planning commission, we, our five-year review, one of the questions that was asked in the survey that people responded to, that they said, or sixty-three percent of respondents said that they are interested in volunteering, and there's now a link up on our, on, uh, banks township.net that you can go to that link to click, to click on that link if you'd like to, um, volunteer or have suggestions for projects and programs that would help enrich Banks, Banks Township. So that would be all the announcements I have. Uh, okay, at this time, we would take any public comments? No public comments, okay. All right, standing reports, um, the zoning board of appeals meets as needed, and I am not aware that they have met or have a meeting planned, so that's all I know about that. Um, Curtis, anything from you as zoning administrator that you'd like reflected in the minutes?
Uh, there was one, um, zoning permit issued in the middle of March, must, I think it was right about the time of our last meeting, for a demolition of a, of an older mobile home on, uh, Ellsworth, at, uh, Ellsworth East Jordan Road. Um, other than that, I just had inquiries on different things, different subjects, but, um, nothing in writing.
Okay, thank you, and then Ken, anything from you today, tonight?
Did we skip the Township Board representative?
Oh, excuse me, Richard, forgive me.
That's all right.
No problem, we'll come afterwards. Um, we met, uh, two weeks ago, and, uh, the main per, the main business we addressed was the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, so we had a record meeting, a record long meeting, five hours, and, uh, we did manage to go through all the fund budgets and discuss them and agreed upon all of them. Uh, interest to this board would be the fact that we did reduce, uh, from the current year's twelve thousand dollar budget for contractual services for zoning and planning, we reduced that to nine thousand dollars for twenty-six. The road fund, um, is with the new two mil, uh, millage that we voted in last year, that's bringing in about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in taxes a year now. That just came in at the beginning of the year, it went with the winter taxes, so there will be some significant road projects, uh, happening throughout the township, and lots of things are being worked on and planned right now. We did set the window change in the fire fund, we set the millage at one mil even, which was a fractional reduction from the previous and the current year. I think it was one point one something, uh, currently, um, pretty healthy balance in there, so we reduced that by just a little bit. And then, uh, the last thing I want to report, you pretty much already said that we'd have that meeting next Monday, it's at five P M. We've got two finalists, if you will, for, um, we have a lot of different people that we've contacted, uh, law firms, and we've narrowed it down to two, and we're bringing them in for a personal interview, and we'll meet right here with them next Monday at five.
Thank you.
You bet.
Ken?
Just the planning report that was in the packet, um, and I thought that was interesting that there is a house bill that's pending to amend the Zoning and Enabling Act to allow wetting barns on agricultural zone property by right, um, communities will still be able to regulate noise and parking and, and those types of things, but you, a community would not be able to prohibit those, um, as a means to allow farmers to have another source of revenue, so those are becoming really popular and, you know, pretty cool things, so I thought that was interesting. That's all I have.
Okay. Okay, then, um, so, uh, we're up to unfinished business, uh, master plan revision. We wanted to start looking at, um, okay, wait, wait, yeah, um, going through the, our master plan, and the two sections that we were asked to look at were community services and natural resources, those two chapters, um, and they did come in, well, in our packet, and, um, so in the discussion that you, let's just take them one by one, how about start with community services? Is there any, um, amendments that you'd like to see to that, any adjustments? Um, Ken, I noted that all of these are footnoted, March twenty twenty-five, so it's super current.
Yeah, and these are in draft form, so, you know, page numbers and graph numbers and everything, those will be added when we get closer to having a final draft. So it's really just looking for feedback on the, you know, the, the narrative portions of, make sure everyone's comfortable with it.
Was there anything updated in the March, Patty, you said three, um, so last March twenty twenty-five, was there anything updated or changed? And that was from the previous, um, five-year plan or?
No, I mean, most of it is carryover, I mean, the, the statistical data, um, more so in the natural resources chapter than community services.
Okay.
Um, but what I've found a lot of times is the community services, things change, you know, things that were offered five years ago are no longer offered, so that's why we just wanna make sure everything that's in there is still accurate. But no, nothing has really changed from the current plan in that chapter.
Okay.
Um, I did have a question on solid waste, uh, it's noted that there's waste management, or the two wastes, the two companies, are, is there anybody aware of another company in our township that offers services?
I think maybe, uh, American Waste is in here and it might wanna update that to their new name, G F L or, G F L is the, they bought American Waste.
Okay, thank you.
Under solid waste?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
I wish there was more.
Um. Anything else on community services that grabbed your attention?
Not for me. I didn't know if, it says, uh, the road commission has announced its road project priorities for the years twenty-five through twenty-nine, and there are no current projects planned within Banks Township during that period.
Yeah.
I don't know if that might be accurate, if they're not really considered road commission projects, are they considered township projects? I don't know how specific, there are some projects planned, so I don't think we should start listing them, but we might wanna at least say that there are, especially with the new, uh, millage, there will be decent road projects going on every year.
Are, are those township projects or?
Well, the road commission's always involved in them, so maybe they didn't, like, uh, the biggest one for this year, maybe most of you already know, but the, um, road leaves town, uh, six-mile lake road, it's something else as you leave town, but right from there all the way out to the county line, it's gonna be redone, and actually, we're just gonna, we're continuing to talk to the township, the county about bringing that within the village too. Right now, it's only been agreed upon, it's already on the docket to do from the village line out to the county line, but we wanna bring it in all the way to the bridge, and we hope that we can still make that change with the county.
Okay.
Is anything happening between the bridge and town?
Uh, that's a little too much to bite off at this time, no. Plus, uh, you know, they gotta, they pretty much have everything planned for this year already, so it's might be enough of a challenge to add that village piece up to that point, but the bridge is, that's a whole nother.
No, I'm not talking, I'm not talking the bridge itself.
Oh.
I'm talking from the bridge to the intersection in town.
No, that's, uh, mostly village stuff, and actually, that's an interesting question because Jerry Rasmussen was here at the meeting and he really asked whether the township could help the village with some of the roads, and that's why this is coming in. And we're actually hoping that we're gonna get a one-third village, one-third township and one-third county road commission is gonna kick in for that piece within the village on that road that we just talked about, and that's, we kinda would hope to maybe do some more of that within the village if, but there wouldn't be any time to do any more than that this year.
So maybe, um, so are you proposing that, uh, that be changed to, um, you know, it says no, there aren't current, no projects planned, but to, um, how would you like to see that reflected, say, as?
I think we could say, have a pretty positive message there that accurately reflects the fact that there will be some significant projects during that timeframe.
Okay.
I think it's quite likely, I mean, the township itself will have a quarter of a million dollars to s, to spend each year with the new millage, and so that, we will certainly spend that.
Okay, yeah, I can, we can reword that to, you know, say, maybe there won't be anything road commission specific, but there are other road projects going on, and, you know, kinda, like you said, emphasize the positive rather than the.
Okay. Right, we can leave, we can get the message across that we should see an improvement in the township roads, I think, as a result of this millage.
Is anything going to be done with the road that seems to have been a pretty common, commonly discussed issue down by Lake Michigan, is that correct?
Yeah, that, uh, we actually, for the first time in a long time, at our last meeting, we didn't spend any time on that.
Okay.
That, I, that's been a huge issue, and there is no definite plan at this point.
Okay.
Kind of at a stalemate, and, uh, I believe the way things stand is a couple of the people that live down there that are very interested in that are supposed to be putting together a plan again.
Okay, just wondering.
What they want doesn't jive with what the county road commission says is they will do.
Okay.
They says they can't, they can't make that road into what they want because it's too narrow, and so it's kind of stalemate.
What road are we talking about, Lake Shore?
Lake Shore Drive.
Okay.
The Antrim County part of it, Banks Township part of it.
Okay, anything else with, um, with community services that caught your attention? It, it, I, I looked at, I read through all of it, and I did not, I wouldn't have any other edits or additions or looks good to me. Man, I, I feel like it accurately reflects, it really reflects what we have going on here. Uh, so let's move on to natural resources chapter.
In this chapter, it includes all the, you know, sort of topics that are required by the Planning and Enabling Act, and surprisingly, at least it was to me, but maybe it's not surprising, developers, potential residents, um, that are considering relocating to Banks Town, they really look at this, you know, they like to see the climate information and topography and all that, so, you know, these are popular chapters within a master plan. So again, the, the graphs and everything will be numbered and cleaned up, and this is just a rough draft at this point, but the focus too, and it not just, um, I mean, the whole chapter's a focus, but, you know, I wanted the planning commission to look at the key takeaways on page fourteen and just make sure everybody's comfortable, um, you know, with that in addition to the remainder of the chapter. It's a pretty lengthy one.
Yeah, it is, it's so, it's the, this narrative description is, is very specific and, and helpful to those who know how to read it or would be interested, like you say. So I, as, as an outsider looking in or a non-expert, found it very enlightening. I did have a question, uh, okay, so on resiliency on page twelve, it, it, there's a subheading, a heading called resiliency, page twelve. Uh, this sounds like one of those, um, well, I will, I will just hold my tongue here. I wondered if, uh, in the first sentence it says resilient, let's see, resilience at refers to planning and design strategies that enable communities to build the capacity to withstand economic, social, environmental and climate change. Oh, excuse me, can you go, go down to the second paragraph here? It says additionally, heavy rainfall events occur twice as often as they did a century ago, with Michigan projected to see a further twenty percent increase in precipitation by the end of the twenty-first century. I, I know you got that from somewhere, I'm wondering if, um, we should footnote that or, I, I just wonder, well, one, for one, seventy-five years away.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it's way out there, so either, either take it out because it's, we have a five-year plan, or am I being short-sighted in saying that?
No, I know, I think that we could go either way, we could get more specific where that information was, came from, or it is a longer range thing, so we can pull that out.
Yeah, I, I, do you guys have a preference about that?
When I read that, I thought the exact same thing.
Okay.
Where did this come from?
Yeah, well, I can tell you that colleagues of mine at Beckett and Rader that are in our Ann Arbor office work on these things, so look at this from a Ann Arbor perspective.
Oh, sure.
Tell you where it's coming from.
I, I was just curious.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I often think, should I edit this, and I'm like, you know what, no, I'm just gonna present it, and we'll, that's, you know, why I wanted everyone to take a look at.
Yeah, I think that's most helpful, you can always pull it out, I, I guess I would, in my opinion, would be to pull that out.
Yeah, I think so too.
Who knows what's gonna happen in seventy-five years?
Well, and, and I think it's.
I think it's important to plan.
Yeah.
But that's just out of our scope, I feel.
I have something right at the beginning on geology and topography, uh, I think I see the Ann Arbor perspective coming through here again, and I would very strongly, uh, suggest that we remove this hundreds of millions of years of stuff, because not everybody believes that, that the earth is nearly that old, and I don't think it's relevant or necessary, I think we can say, um, you know, the first sentence, fine, um, it was part of the Michigan basin, the geologic sort of formed, as sediment was deposited, but I think we should just remove all that stuff. I mean, there are millions of people, I'm one of them, who believe the earth is much younger than that, and, uh, I would, uh, I think we can just, uh, form the sediment was deposited and just forget about the timeframe in there. You could get, cut it off there and pick it up again on multiple glacial advances and retreats, create a complex landscape of a riverbed and deposition. So I would, I'd appreciate if we could remove that.
If you do that, for sure.
I think it's controversial at best, and in a very conservative, um, community like ours, I think there would be a lot of people that would appreciate not having that. That's very much an evolutionistic kind of, uh, jargon.
Okay.
I, it go, um, I, I would concur, Richard, with that, I mean, it, it made me raise my eyebrows, but, um, I, it goes on to, it says under resiliency, or maybe this is in the takeaway, page, back to page twelve, it talks about our aging, aging subject, pardon it, it goes on, let me find it. Just a minute, forgive me. Never mind, forget it, it's okay, I, I, I.
Well, one of the takeaways is, you know, due to septic limitations, you know, this is really summarizing, but it should, you know, maybe Banks Township and the village should get together on a, you know, public system.
Oh, yeah.
And I wasn't sure if that was appropriate to have in there or not. Again, I saw that and I thought, well, I'll see what the planning commission thinks.
Yeah, um, help me out here, those of you who've been longer, i- is it their discussion regarding us, uh, sewage system, maybe Julie, you could speak to this?
The village has worked on it for a long time.
Yeah, okay, so that's not us. But we would work in conjunction with them, or propose.
Yeah, I mean, could, but, you know, again, it's.
Is that out of our scope, I should ask?
Not necessarily.
No, it's not.
Yeah, no.
Well, i- they won't put it in the village, it's gonna be out in the township's.
Yeah.
So, we will be involved.
Yeah.
Okay.
How far along that, I'm sorry, I've lost you.
Okay, I'm.
Page fourteen.
Page fourteen, the takeaways, the thir- the second bullet. Due to limitations of septic systems in township, it would be reasonable for Banks to consider a sewage system to accommodate growth. This could be done collaboratively, collaboratively with the Village of Ellsworth.
It's also mentioned in, uh, the resiliency second chapter as well.
Okay.
It's just mentioned in there. But that would probably fall on us eventually, because.
And, and I do planning work for the village, I've not been involved, we haven't been involved at all in the, in the septic, um, project that they've tried, but I know they've, they've had, hit a lot of roadblocks, I'm not sure specifically what they are, um, but I know they've had difficulty getting, sort of moving forward with that.
We're, do you know if there were issues with buying property?
No, I don't believe the issue was with property, and it was out by us. And the only discussion they had about hooking up septic, sewer to that was just the people on the way from the village out to the, to the site.
Didn't want it?
But I don't know where they are with it, I don't know if they'd actually purchased the property.
And I don't think that they are talking about putting a sewer system in the whole township, it was, it's just the village.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's what I think, but, but my thought is, they are, they don't have anywhere to put it in the town, in the village.
Like the plant or whatever, yeah, the treatment, yeah.
It would have to be out of the village.
Yeah, you're right.
I don't know, I, my thought is, it's pretty hypothetical and it's pretty far away, I don't know that we should put it in here.
Um, w- what, were you specifically the second bullet?
Yes.
I, I would agree with that, I mean, there, it makes no sense to do it individually for a township, let alone collaboratively with the village. That would be an astronomical expense to, at the, at the township level, to try to incorporate something like that, where I, to me, the juice isn't worth the squeeze on that at all. With technological advances in septic systems nowadays, you can still, in large majority of situations, even though you might not have the correct soils for it, still provide a septic system for a multi-bedroom residential home. And there's ways to go about it, is it more costly, absolutely, but I think that that should be put back and the individual homeowner, not as a township, and we allocate resources like that somewhere else, 'cause that would be an astronomical expense to put that much force main throughout the entire township.
In your master plan too, I mean, it is conceptual, but you also shouldn't include things in there that you know are like, not likely or never going to happen, because those come back and burn you.
Right.
You know?
They're gonna say.
You have, you have a meeting and then people in the public see something and they're like, why haven't you done this?
Yeah.
So, you know, that might be one of these things that.
Under promise, over delivery.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, you know, if we can do it someday, great, but let's not put it in here and then read it and say, well, what's wrong with us, why are?
Yeah.
Why aren't we doing this?
Anything else you wanna highlight, Ken, on this?
No, that was it, you know, the, the, you know, the, the data relating to, you know, the amount of wetlands and everything like that, and that comes from the state and, you know, that information is, you know, kinda set in stone. It's just how we describe it is what we're, you know, looking for feedback on and, um, you know, the additional thing too is we don't have to make this final decisions on any of this tonight. Once we get through all the chapters, a complete rough draft, we'll come back to the planning commission, go through the whole thing, and then we'll have a public hearing, um, you know, before it even gets to the township board. And up until the point that the township board adopts it, there's always opportunities to, to modify things.
Okay. Any other edits or that, anything else that, um, caught your attention with the, the, um, either of these, the community services or natural resources, any further discussion on this?
I don't, I, I like Ken's idea, let's continue to digest on it and read it over, you know, over the next couple, the next meeting, and see if there's anything else that anyone else has highlighted.
Okay.
I, I would be okay with that.
Okay. All right, and then, so Ken, would we be get, looking at another two chapters next meeting?
We can look at two, or we can bring the, the natural resources back and look at one additional, the next one would be the existing land use, which should be pretty, fairly easy, it's just a reflection of how property is currently used in the township. So, you know, we can do three, or, you know, just focus on maybe a second look at the natural resources and then one new chapter.
All right.
It's up to that one.
Would it make sense to do final, and this is just an idea, I would allow everyone's thoughts to keep everything moving, propose a land use, everyone makes their major bullet points at the next meeting, and final bullet points are done on everything we've looked at today, so we constantly have a goal moving forward of cross two off the checklist, present an agenda for the next one, major bullet points done, and then, you know what I mean, kinda have a constantly rotating item, so we don't get too bogged down on it, but I'm, I'm open to everyone else's opinions on that.
I like it.
Yeah.
Okay, it's all right, Nick, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good. And, and also too, we're not, we, you know, the, we, we started the five-year review a little early, so we're not under any pressure.
Okay.
You know, we got all the time that we need to, to go through this.
Okay, yeah, it's hard to, um, working a bureaucratic slow, I'm not use, I'm like get her done, so this is gotta re, re, um, adjust my paradigm here. Okay, very good. Sounds like a plan, all right, and then, um, on bullet point B, amendment to Article twelve of zoning ordinance, transitory extraction, natural resources.
I just, I left at everyone's places and maybe we could include this under communication, I left one for you too. We did get a letter back from the county planning, uh, commission, um, they reviewed the amendments that the planning commission recommended, uh, approval of last month, uh, and they didn't have any issues. So, this letter from the county, along with the recommended draft from the planning commission, was sent to, uh, the supervisor and the clerk, uh, with the request that it be put on a township board agenda at the next available opportunity.
Okay.
So, um, that amendment is moving forward.
Wonderful. Okay, under new business, um, draft amendment, you, I think Curtis, you wanted us to look at the draft amendment six nine, six point zero nine of the zon- zoning ordinance?
And I took a crack at it and I may have made it worse than it already is, so there was a redlined version in the packet. And then.
I guess, what, I, I just, just to be clear, would you give us a hypothetical, so if I owned, um, say I own fifty-nine acres, I can, I can only put five, it can only be divided into five lots?
Six.
I can round up?
Fifty-nine would round to sixty.
Okay.
Anything over fifty would round, if it was fifty-one, it would still round up it.
Okay, I know that's probably not probable, 'cause they're not big chunks of land, so I just, I know that's maybe, maybe, like, say I own thirty-three acres, then what do we do?
You would get, you, according to this, would be four, yeah, round up to four acres.
Oh, okay, so there's a lot of leeway there. All right, no, so not every, there's not every, um, parcel or every lot is not a square acre, correct? Is that where the confusion comes in? Like, here's a, uh, my, my owned acre and a half, or acre and a quarter, or acre and a third?
You're careful splitting that?
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, is that why?
I mean, part of the confusion too, and Curtis corrected that wrong, if you look at, at the top of that chart, the minimum square foot lot size in the Ag district is twenty thou- is half acre. So, but then you're, you're directed to that footnote A, which requires essentially that you maintain pretty large-sized lots, so it doesn't connect with that half acre minimum.
So you could, uh, if you had that situation, you could, and you had twenty acres to deal with, you could split it into two tens. Or you could split it, in this case, the way it is, you could split it, you could have a half acre and nineteen and a half. But the problem comes in when you go beyond that, so now if it's not a twenty-acre piece, if it's a twenty-five acre piece, it gets really, I, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around how you even do the math on that to make that work when it was, and I know the, the, I have been told the reason they did this, or they, Marv's not here now, but he, he was a part of that, I believe, um, was so that they didn't necessarily have to break up, um, someone's bigger piece into a chunk just to, just to have a house for grandma, or, you know, a secondary unit, which I think probably led to the accessory dwelling unit thing, that why they put that in there. But I, I'm not sure on timing, if this, if, if changing the minimum, uh, lot size to twenty thousand feet, I think that probably predated the whole concept of an accessory dwelling unit. Because if that was the reason you did it, was that, so that you didn't, like I said, you didn't, you could have a spot for, so, you know, a family member, and you didn't wanna break up the whole place, you could have a, a small piece, but now that becomes a separate, deeded property. Maybe the planning, I'm just thinking, asking, maybe the planning commission wants to backtrack on this, if, if you wanna maintain the larger pieces. Now, there is, there is, uh, under there, there's another footnote, um, that talks about a cluster development that you could, that you could do. The project density of clustered residents or planned unit shall not exceed one unit per ten, per ten acres, and I don't, we haven't done any of those, I, I would have to be talk to this, somebody who knows what the H that means, um, and how that applies to the, 'cause there's a whole section in the zoning ordinance about cluster developments. But that's what Marv had referred to, was that the, they wanted to make it available, I don't think you were here for that meeting, um, to do the, to do a, some sort of a cluster development, so that you don't, again, we don't end up with, you know, the whole township, all the Ag property and our property, and our, and our township split all up into, into little, little pieces.
Yeah, I mean, that language, the concept of a cluster development, that, that really doesn't track, I mean, it's saying, you know, one lot, unit per ten acres, I mean, that's.
That's not a cluster.
That's not, and, yeah.
So thi- this would, you know, you, you had someone who, let's say, had a hundred acres, and it was in Ag, with a twenty thousand square foot minimum, you know, they would be able to do as many splits as the Land Division Act would allow, which, yeah, ten. This would not allow them to split it up into ten separate lots, so it's, it's, the, the goal is to main, require the larger lots, um, we, I think we just wanna make sure planning commission was comfortable with that. You know, sometimes, you know, people who have larger lots, that's kinda like their retirement plan, they subdivide it and sell it off and, you know, that's part of the benefit of having a big tract of land.
Um, Curtis, you're the one.
You know, again.
You're the one that has to interpret this.
Yeah.
So, what would you recommend? You're the one that has to please this, look at this.
Yeah, and, and again, I, you're dealing with what the, what the, um, the legislation, what is it, the land division?
Yeah, land division.
The Act. You're, you're dealing with what that, by law, um, says people can, can do, how many, how many splits they get on a piece of property. And I think this, and again, this is the only, uh, of course, it's most of our, most of our land in township is Ag.
Right. Seventy percent.
Yeah, um, that, that's, that's what it gets down to, is interpretation. I just need to, I need to have a solid foundation on which I can, that I can interpret something when somebody comes to me, so that is not, you know, I'm not leaning on this side of the line for this, in this situation, oh, that makes sense for that, you know, and then, and later, another one comes in, well, that, that kinda makes sense there too. I can't do that, 'cause that's what's gonna get me in trouble, that's what's gonna get the township in trouble.
Yeah, I see that.
And, and that's why Brian Graham will occasionally chew me out, you know, well, you should've come to me first with this, how come, you know, you should've sold me this right away? Well, geez, okay, I guess now I know. So, it's, it's, it's going to be a problem. And it's starting to show in a couple spots, again, because I don't know how to interpret it. I got a thirty-nine acre piece that people wanna split, that's a family inheritance thing, they wanna split the property up, uh, there's four of them, there's thirty-nine acres, well, one of them wants a little piece with, with some, some dwellings on it, or some buildings on it, and then there's the rest of them, well, how do I, how do I split that thirty-nine up? They got the number of splits allowed, they, they get that by law, but how do you do it, um, and stay within what our township zoning says they can do?
Yeah.
Again, you got, you can have eight and a half, eight and a half, you can, if there's, if you took a five-acre piece out, you got thirty, you got, uh, thirty-four acres left. All right, and I got, I got three more splits. Well, I can have eight and a half, and eight and a half, and a, and a seventeen, but that doesn't work with those numbers, that doesn't work with this density thing, not in my book, I, I, I can't justify it.
I mean, the, I think the question for the planning commission is, is the, the goal, we wanna, we wanna maintain the larger lots, the, um, the view sheds and the, you know, open space, or do we wanna encourage a more cluster-type housing development?
Here's how I could, here's how I could rectify that, or I could justify it or rationalize it. In this particular case, okay, the thirty-nine acre deep piece, they got four people they wanna, one wants a five acre, there's thirty-four acres left, and there's three people, well, I, you could do it equal, you know, you could split it up equally, well, they don't, they don't wanna do that. Do you allow them to split it, 'cause legally, they could have the three more splits? Do you allow them to just, them to not be a ten-acre piece, uh, you know, so you could have two eight and halves on a seventeen, is that, would, would that be all right? I don't, I don't know, it does. It's this two per ten acres, or two per twenty acres. It's that that causes me grief.
Does the one per ten acres, I mean, we're still not getting close to cluster developments with those numbers.
No, not yet.
You're giving people a little bit more flexibility, so if someone does, I mean, I don't know the percentages of what, there's forty sec- forty acres or eighty acres, I don't know what that looks like, but if you're not creeping into what a cluster development is, because I'm assuming this, and maybe someone can correct me, it seems like a lot of the population in this township doesn't want that to happen, and if they do, then maybe that's a discussion to do in our master plan or what have you.
Yeah.
This still falls in line with maintaining larger sections of acreage while still giving people the freedom to do what they want with the land that they purchase.
Were you able to derive or devol- or derive, I guess, from any, from other townships, anything close to that sort of a language that they have?
No, I mean, not with.
What do, what do they do?
They, they require larger, uh, lots, like five-acre minimums in their Ag districts, you know, and that would be more in line with the footnote, so what makes it confusing is that, I mean, the one thing I, on the one hand, I like it because it eliminates non-conforming lots, because I'm sure there are smaller-sized lots that are in Ag.
Right.
So those won't be non-conforming, but i- in Curtis's scenario where you've got four family members, they're not gonna be able to split it up in a way where they each get an equal share, this wasn't, this isn't gonna allow them to do it.
But the one in ten does.
No, I think, I might have made it even more confusing. No, I think, I would have made it even more confusing. So the, ignore the, the new language and red and look at what's lined out. What's lined out is the current language.
Is there any restriction on, and this is just from my knowledge, is it per lot in its entirety or is it per owner of lot? So if they were to sell, they were to split it into two, you know, call it an eight, eight and a half and the remaining parcel of that, thirty-one and a half, would the owner of the thirty-one and a half then have the ability to split that again? Or is it just based on what the lot is, not necessarily who owns it?
Well, when you're dealing with land divisions, you got to kind of go back in time and look at the prior splits.
Understood.
And you only get so many in a given amount of time. So I think it would be reflective of the lot, not necessarily of the owners.
Okay.
You know, the thing that is troubling to me is, you know, people under the state law would be able to split their lots more than this would allow. So this is kind of, if push came to shove, I don't know that this would be important. Someone could say, you know, you can't contradict state law. Your zoning provision is invalid. I don't know that it would ever come to that, but we're way off what the state law would allow people to split a forty-acre parcel.
Is, is it feasible to match up with what the state has right now?
We could. I hear that there's a, I think there's a bill pending that they're considering letting people do more splits than is currently allowed. So, you know, yeah, I don't know what the common ground is. Do we, do we want to increase the required square footage of the lots in Ag to be closer to that footnote? Or do we want to go the other way and allow more splits? And you're exactly right. The community survey, housing, clustered housing, that did not rate very high. Folks like the wide open spaces, farmland preservation, you know, recreational lands, there wasn't a big call for housing, clustered housing.
The more populated it gets up here, at some point, I think, and this is speculation, but you're going to see a little bit more of a push. I mean, we're at the middle point of Traverse City, Charlotte, by Potoski, Harbor Springs. At some point, we're going to get encroached on. Because this is not, the, the population increase is not slowing down based on my understanding by any means. So I think that we're kind of in a unique position where we have to ride a relatively delicate line of maintaining what we have, which is what the large percent of a population wants, but not making us more, not making us unattractive potential people that want to move up here, you know what I mean? There's still more than enough room for everyone to have their space. Personally, I, I love the fact that it's as spread out as around and I think everyone in this room is probably the same way. But at some point, we're going to get encroached on a little bit. And if this is making it a little bit of a less attraction to the township and makes it harder for people to do what they want with the land that they're purchasing, I think we should entertain and be flexible to a, to a certain degree as to what people can and cannot do. If you can only split it, you know, to twenty acres, two per, two per twenty acres, then maybe it is worth opening up a conversation.
Let me just insert something, another thought on this, just from a different perspective. You know, occasionally you can get a call from a developer that's interested in, in, you know, a piece of property and how they can, you know, man, what can we do here and split this up and blah, blah, blah. So you got that, you got that influence. And then you've got the family that's got forty acres. Well, we'd like the kids to have, well, I guess an example would be what had the Fox property down there on Frick's Beach. Yeah, down the road from you. He bought that. There was sixty-five, I think it was sixty-five acres, something like that. And, and we, that ended up going to the zoning board of appeals because of the way it was split, because the one, one of his pieces was longer than four, four to one. And so he had to get, get, had to go through that whole process. But that was because he wanted each kid to have a piece of the property and split that up. That, that happened to work with, with what we have existing here. So you got two, you know, you got two opposing, well, not opposing, but different perspectives. The one I see as, yeah, that makes sense. It's your family. You want your kids. Well, take Alex, for example. There's ninety-three acres there, right? Let's say in, in thirty years or something that they want to do some sort of splitting with half the kids want to stick around. Who knows? And that would probably, they could probably do that under the existing. But you got that push. But then you got somebody else might want to come in and say, hey, there's ninety-three acres there, boy, let's, let's split that sucker up as much as we can. And I think that's what we want to, that's, that's what we want to stiff-arm a little bit.
Yeah.
Right? I don't think we want necessarily do it to the people that live here and that have families and the families grow and things change. densities, there's that. I think we need to be sensitive to that. But beware of, of the others who would come in and wouldn't have a care and world about changing the whole face of the township.
Absolutely. I totally agree with that.
I felt that same way, kind of with the whole commercial solar, you know, where you can, all this. Boy, let's put eighty acres of panels in there. That'll look great. You know, some people don't think that. But that's just my two cents.
No, I would agree with that.
I don't know how you get there.
Yeah.
With, that, that's the problem. How do we get there in the language? You know, so that we can, even this case of the thirty-nine acres, you know, okay, it was in the family forever and there's thirty-nine and there's four surviving people and they want to split it equally? Who am I to say they shouldn't be able to do that? I just need to know how I can allow it, you know, from this position that I don't end up in, you know, doing something improper.
Ken, what do you think the biggest difference is based on what was there versus what? Like theoretically, not theoretically, but like how it's proposed, what is the biggest difference between the two per twenty or the one per ten?
The, the one per ten was just, I think it clarifies it. It makes it simpler.
Okay.
I don't know that it improves it. It kind of saying the same thing, just in what I thought was a clearer way. You know, it, it, it might allow, you know, on the case of the forty acres, it would allow them to probably do the four. You know, one per ten. So it might give them a little bit more flexibility than they currently have with the two lots per twenty.
Maybe you want to look at, in Ag, maybe you want to look at a minimum lot size of five acres.
Yeah.
It seemed like when I grew up downstate, Otto County, and which has exploded, you know, in the last forty years. But it was farmland and all that down. And it seemed to me there, even down there, that a minimum lot size in Fulton Township was five acres.
In, in my experience, I, I can't think of a, of a zoning ordinance that has an Ag district with less than a two-acre minimum. I mean, twenty thousand square feet is, that's usually like your, your single-family residential lot size.
I actually asked in our last board meeting when it went to half acre or twenty thousand, because I always thought it was two acres.
Yeah.
We did a couple splits over the years. Like we split off two acres for my brother in the eighties. It's now my mother's house because two acres was the minimum.
Yeah.
But nobody seemed to remember that it was two acres. So maybe I, I don't know.
We had the same thing in the old Feenster farmhouse.
There's a lot of two-acre lots around here because that's what it was and I don't know when it changed.
Yeah. I mean, what I could do is I could do some research for the next meeting to see what impact it would have if we changed that number. You know, how many, let's say we made it a two-acre minimum in Ag, how many non-conforming lots would that create? And if it's too many, if it creates an issue, then, you know, maybe that takes us in one direction.
Does that help, Curtis? Do you think that?
I think that's a pretty reasonable way to go. At least you can see, it's better, better off to look over, look down the road and see, well, if I, if we do this, what, how's that going to affect me then?
Yeah.
Rather than just jumping in there, coming around a blind corner.
Okay, that's what I'll do. And then the answer to that question will point us in which direction we want to go and clean this up, clarifying it.
Okay.
To be revisited. I'm going to say before we go on that the numbering is all off on the agenda, so I'm going to change it so that the numbers go in order.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Just so you don't look at it and say, that was ten B, when it was really eight B.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, we missed, yeah, I see. I never, I didn't catch that. That's fine, Cindy. All right, public comment. All right, with that, all right, let's see, our next meeting is.
I would like to have a public comment.
Yes.
Welcome to the, I, I was glad to hear that you guys had some of the same reservations about some of the verbiage in the master. And, and we all have our issues, right? We all, everybody has a right to their opinion. So I state that right up front. But the climate part, to me, just, I'm sorry, it just bugged me. I look at the graph and yeah, for the last X number of years they were here and then all of a sudden it's going way, way, way up here because of the projected models that things are going to go to Ag. And I'm, I would, I would have a problem if that was in the written plan, that, that, to me, that endorses, that's a township endorsement of, of that science. And I'm sorry, I just don't think that's a place for us to go. That's my comment.
We had exactly the same issue in the county master plan as I worked through that on the county planning commission over the last three years. Same thing. We had one person that really wanted to bring the climate change thing in there real clear and make a big deal about how it's impacting our county. And we had a lot of discussion on it. We left it out of there too. Because it does, it's not the place to start having controversial stuff. That is controversial.
We can, we can report on the climate information without speculating where it's heading or.
If you have historical stuff, that's on.
Yeah.
We, we can present an average based on more current data than, you know, getting down the road. Yeah, I mean, and I saw that in there and I thought. I think of it too, though, you know, they were trying to get, maybe throw something creative in there for us to, for the planning commission to review and so, you know, I think it maybe worked to, to that effect.
I think it's an argument.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just.
For a turn.
Right. Okay, I would, our next meeting will be May thirteenth, six P M. And at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll support.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Who made the motion?
I did.
Richard Frank Second.
Yep, I got that, but I thought Frank did it and then he seconded it. I was, oh, I was missing.
You said the thirteenth, right?
May thirteenth, yes.
Six fifty-six.
All righty. Thanks, Cindy.
Yep.
Thanks, Gabby.